Meeting is called to order. Let's all stand for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please go to the board. Please call a roll.
Mr. Minaira.
Here.
Mr. Seale.
Here.
Mr. Malorada.
Mr. Meek.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Shore. Mr. Borbo. Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Snobry.
Here.
Mr. Vidal.
Here.
Mr. Howey.
Here.
Mr. DiBian.
Here.
Mr. DiLorenz.
Under our business, we have memorialized PB 2013-02, 11 Franklin Avenue. We're going to carry that to the next meeting. And we have the application before the board. It's PB 2013-02, 81-179 Belmont Avenue, BOIV Bellevue MCB LLC for preliminary and final major site plan, multifamily residential and commercial uses.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Should I proceed? No communication. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council's name is Robert Gassion. The firm is Gassion, Flacco, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant, BOIV Bellevue MCB LLC. My clients are owners of blocks 11 and 12 and block 2001 or 81-127 Belmont Avenue. My client is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval in order to construct a mixed-use development at the property on Belmont Avenue. The applicant is proposing there be a one-story building that remains and two new buildings to be constructed. The existing masonry building is approximately 55,000 square feet and will continue to be used commercial. The proposed building A will have a certain amount of square feet of commercial space, which I believe is about 4,500, and 132 dwelling units. Proposed building B will have 1,500 square feet of commercial and 100 residential units. That's correct, 15,000. Did I say the wrong number? I'm sorry. 15,000.
Is that Mr. Conti's acting?
Yeah.
Well, just tell him to come up.
I didn't see his seat. I don't want...
Uh-uh. Okay. You might be sitting on that door.
There's another seat there.
So you're not going to get set on DiBian's side?
Mr. Conti, were you able to hear what I said back there? The witnesses you'll hear from are Brian Stolar, the owner representative, Scott Raspen, the architect, Bob Byer, the site engineer, Craig Zendren, the LSRP, Craig Poragoi, the traffic engineer, and Mark Vazini, the landscape architect. Mr. Stolar will generally review the application and discuss the amenities. The architect will describe the existing building and provide renderings and discuss the proposed buildings and provide renderings. He will also review the number and type of units. Bob Byer, the site engineer, will review and describe the site and respond to questions raised in Mr. Erickson's report. The environmental consultant will review the history of the property, the cleanup work to date, and what remains to be done. The traffic engineer will discuss the condition of traffic volume and pedestrian safety. The landscape architect, Mark Vazini, will review the extensive landscaping and discuss pedestrian walks and pedestrian areas. I have a planner available, but I don't think he will be necessary because the application is 100% compliant. There are no variances whatsoever being sought. It complies with the redevelopment plan exactly. I'd like to call my first witness, Brian Stolar.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the full truth, and not to betray the truth to help you God?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Brian Stolar.
Spell your last name.
S-T-O-L-A-R.
Thank you.
Mr. Stolar, what is your business address?
363 Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair.
And your occupation?
Real estate developer.
And what is your relationship to the applicant?
We have a co-venture to develop this project.
And would you discuss first the existing structure on the site?
The existing structure is a supermarket that had been formerly occupied by Teff Mart and is currently occupied by the new operator that you see there today.
And would you briefly describe the proposal and what it is you are seeking site plan approval for?
Our proposal is for a mixed-use project, 232 residential units, about 19,000 square feet of commercial retail and parking and other amenities to support the project.
Is there anything you can tell us about the proposed commercial uses on the site?
The concept is to make these essentially service-type of retail. We are focused and interested in fitness for one of them. I think that's a great thing, both for the residents of the new development as well as for the residents of Silver Lake. And then the rest would be more convenience-oriented retail.
Do you have any familiarity at all with the history of the property?
Yes. The property previously has a lot of properties in New Jersey. In fact, Robin Lindon in the SO refinery is pretty familiar with industrial properties in New Jersey. Was Edison Battery Factory. And then eventually, over the years, many years later, the current structure was built.
And if this application were to be approved, will the rentals, will the units be rentals or individual ownership?
The plan is that the residential units would be rental.
And then where would the responsibility lie for things such as ongoing maintenance and snowplow?
All the responsibility will be by the owner and management company for the project. The residents will be like any other residential rental tenant, and they will have the right to use the apartment and all the facilities, but no management responsibility.
And we do, the plan reflects that you have more parking spaces than are required. Could you explain to the board why your group has decided to have more spaces than required?
Well, you know, you really have to look forward and you've got to look present. And I think we're very excited, by the way, for Belleville and with the chairman and all the members for having us here tonight and for Silver Lake. Right now, people are still relying on their cars pretty significantly. We have Uber and we have a lot of other transportation ideas. But we want to make absolutely certain that there's never a deficit at any time. And we believe that because the light rail is there and because we have this mixed-use development, this is going to be a thriving, very, very successful development that will add a lot to the economics of both Silver Lake in specific and Belleville in general. We wanted to make sure that we did even more than we had to and essentially provided more than we redeveloped the planner of ours.
Will it be any specific designation of the spaces to a particular use?
What will happen over the management between the supermarket and the residential and the different commercial retail users, based together, we're going to work as a group to make sure that all the parking is managed and coordinated in a way that works towards benefit.
Will the applicant repair or replace any sidewalk or curb that is damaged during construction?
Yes.
Would you describe how the operation or the construction will be completed and whether or not there'll be any phases?
I can tell you that the way that this project is designed, and I'd like to in a minute review those questions, council, show as we are to the members of the public here, show you a rendering, you'll see that really the buildings, the two buildings, really have to work in concert together. Even from the site plan itself, you can see it, although the rendering will make it more clear. So you really see this as one development. Certainly, one building may become occupied sooner than the other one, but they will be both built essentially at about the same time.
And you want to make some final comments, I believe, with regard to the unique steps that were taken to make this a particularly attractive building and make it fit within the area. Would you go to the board and start those comments, please?
Council, please start marking these sentences.
Yes. Just explain what that is and then we'll mark it as A1, just briefly.
So, and we have one up, what we did is we put one for the public one for you folks so that there wasn't any conflict. And what we have here is we're looking from the very tip of the property at the corner, closest to the light rail. We're looking at the front from Belmont.
Well, just mark that then, the front from Belmont. Just mark it as A1 in the corner if you would.
And these are two buildings. They're both, they're both four stories... Hold on.
Okay. Sorry for interrupting.
No problem.
They're both four stories of residential over the retail. Here in the front of this first building, on the first level of this building, and then we have some other amenity and outdoor space on the top of this section. And you'll also see that we put on the top of the building, which we really think is actually unique in this entire area, a large band of glass all the way around the top of the building to really make it look a little bit different and to take away that feeling that you see in so many buildings that they just look like a straight facade. And then we also have a lot of green. We have on this element, this rendering, you see into a parking area between the buildings. When our engineer and architect, I don't want to steal their thunder or their specifics, they'll show you, we also have a large public area to the rear of the property that's green. We have a dog park. We have a lot of outdoor activities. And then what we've also done is really made sure that this project has a lot of interactivity between the different uses, so it's easy to get from one place to the other. It's easy to park. If guests are going to come to visit, folks who live here, they won't have a hard time finding their way. By the way, this is an entrance right here to get into this building, so it's close to like the center section. And the other entrance for this building is right across here. This is an entrance to the fitness retail. It's more of a commercial setting. We've incorporated also some green sustainable features you'll see and you'll hear about. We have the rooftop amenities you see there. If you can see over in the far right, I apologize the words aren't any bigger, it says coffee retail. That's really designed to be a community-oriented design. We're actually working with a few banks and a few coffee retailers to really make that a very special combination of services for everyone in Belleville and Silver Lake area. And then with 232 residential units, we are also including more of a smaller scale size of units. We only have just over 80 of the 232 are two-bedroom. The rest are one-bedroom or studio. And then a concept that is really becoming very, very popular, which we're doing in Montclair, a lot of folks are doing in New York, and a lot of other, Boston, Dallas, Denver, everywhere, they're called micro-units, and they really are smaller, but they have all the friendship built in for those of us old enough to remember the Murphy bed, down pull the wall bed, and actually build that, build that in and really give especially younger folks the opportunity to move in without having to spend $5,000 at IKEA or Home Depot or Lowe's. And to really give them, we call them the backpack unit. You can just sort of move in, and it's really great for folks. We're maximizing the light rail connection, and our engineer will show you it'll be a dedicated pedestrian crossing, a safely designed special crossing so that they can easily get back and forth to the light rail. We have a bike depot. We're involved with the New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition, and we believe that people will only use bikes and walk. If the sidewalks and the ways to get around work well, and if there's a good place to put a bicycle and access it and use it. You'll see we actually have an outdoor structure that we've built for somebody to take their bike. It's TFOC controlled instead of being like in the basement of a building where no one ever wants to go. And then we're also going to be using some share cars, one brand you've heard of, maybe Zipcar, there's others, so that people can be incentivized here as we move towards the future of possibly using more Uber-type of short-term or have their own share car. The Zipcars are generally between about $12 to $14 an hour. So if you want to take a car for an hour or two, you can kind of grab it, do something. You don't have to take it to go food shopping here, because you walk right across to our food store. But perhaps you want to go somewhere else, go downtown here, get a bite to eat, and possibly come back and really try to make it something that people will really look at as a project of the future. And then the last couple of things are really the other focus of redevelopment. We've been involved in about 25 redevelopment projects in Morris, Essex, and Bergen Counties, and Hudson, I'm sorry. And really, you look for properties that have either obsolescence, excess land, the need of environmental cleanup, and this has all three in addition to being vital. So we're really excited about it together with the retail ownership group, and we look forward to showing the rest of the presentation.
I have no further questions. Just a point of order for clarification. As Mr. Gassion stated and the application says, the owner owns 81-127 Belmont Avenue. There is references in the application and in the plans and on the agenda that we're talking about 81-179 Belmont Avenue. Can you please explain the difference?
I can only tell you, you know, sometimes the addresses are very different in the offices. But the lot and block is correct, and that's really the legal position we take, that we have a correct lot and block to mention.
And what's the block for 81-127?
The lot and block, just give me one second. I'll tell you what it is. In my opening, I pointed out that it's lots 11 and 12 and block 2001.
There's only, I don't know where, lot 201?
Block. Block 201.
Lot 11 and 12.
Thank you.
One second. Does anybody in the public have questions only of this witness? We're going to hold comments to the end. We have a very large panel tonight, and we're going to hold all the comments to the end. And the meeting is only going to stay, we're going to stay at 10:00 PM. Because beyond that, we're going to have another meeting. Mr. Shelton?
Just one very quick question. Do you have a projection for the number of school-aged children this project will generate?
I don't have the exact number, but we're going to be able to tell you that. I could tell you that we have a lot of experience with it. We are building a number of projects in Montclair, and because Montclair's had so much residential development, the governing body there decided to actually survey it, every single multifamily building in town. Many buildings and thousands of units. And the average was six schoolchildren for every 100 units. We have several projects in Montclair that are right around that or less. Yesterday, I was at a presentation, it's a new project right by the train station there in Montclair, right at Pine Street. It is 52 units. It's fully leased. It opened up in May of '17, and there's one. So we believe approximately in that five to 10 would be a lot because, first of all, they're rental apartments. In our case, we think it'll be skewed lower because we have so few too big.
Thank you.
The top floor, you were saying, is all covered glass. Dare Park or something on that top floor?
Yes, sir. The Royal Park.
The Royal Park. Every floor.
It's not entirely glass. If you look close, there are bulions in small sections, but much more glass than would be normal.
And are you, the developer, are you familiar with the Cambridge Heights Development in Nutley, Cleveland?
Yes.
Are you aware that their projections for school-aged children actually tripled and almost quadrupled their expert's projection?
Quite familiar. We were actually the company that finished the work out on that project in the back after the former developer had completed. And the units that you're talking about average 2,600 square feet. Our units average about a third of that. So it's a completely different product, and it really has no relevance to this type of housing. And the reason that that happened there is they really were becoming like a more affordable single-family home because they were big enough. They were all three bedrooms for the most part, or two bedrooms and den, and a lot of garage and a lot of amenities. You could live in a family. Really couldn't really have a family for the most part.
You want to make the point that many times we've seen the experts' projections...
Objection, Mr. Chairman. This is not for questions. He's answered the question.
I would only add for the record that we don't, while we respect and appreciate all the experts in this field, we built about 9,000 homes and townhouses and apartments and condominiums. And we rely a lot on our own experience, and we view this to be a project that will house mostly either empty-esters or very young folks, very, very few families.
I'd like to know how many residents...
Wait a minute.
And what about names and addresses, Mr. Chairman? At this time, it's only questions. We're not going to swear them in. You don't have to swear them in, but at least they should say their name and their address. All right. Angelo Dogenio with the Labor's Union.
Can you come up a little bit because I'm having trouble hearing you?
Angelo Dogenio with the Labor's Union.
And I need to spell the weird last name, please.
Angelo Dogenio, D, apostrophe capital, E, R, G, E, N, I, O. I'd like to ask Mr. Stolar how many residents will be on the project. You can have apprentices, if you're going to have any kind of percentage of residents that can help build this, this project. Any kind of job fairs or anything like that for the town?
I don't know if we, I don't think we have any particular plans, but certainly any local support and local labor from the community is always welcome.
I try to reach out to you many a times on all your projects, and I never get an answer. That's why I was wondering if Belleville has any kind of language in their, in their projects, any kind of PLA or anything like that, if there would be any word in the... Responsible contract of language or anything like that. Mr. Erickson?
I usually see that in the redevelopment plan, but I don't know if it's in, if it was, but that's what's in it.
He's not aware of any language.
Okay.
Thank you.
David Yenior, 6 Essex Street, Bellevue.
I'm going to ask, can the public please stand up?
You didn't hear me?
So that I can...
Mr. Chairman, can you ask the public to stand up and state and spell their name, please?
Could you please stand and state your name and spell?
There's a lot of people here and I'm having trouble hearing you.
David Yenior, Y-E-N-N-I-O-R, 6, no, 6 Essex Street, Bellevue. I have a couple of concerns in that when the gentleman is pointing to the document over here, the people in the audience don't see what he's pointing to.
I'm sorry. We have two boards, but I couldn't point the board to say.
So the presentation is, you know, not relevant to the people in the audience. Secondly, is this the time to talk about, to ask questions about the pollution and what's, what cleanup is going to be done? I think we have somebody who will speak to that.
No, I object to being asked of this witness. He did not talk about any environmental issues, and therefore, any question of that nature would be beyond the scope of direct.
There will be, you will have a witness discussion.
We do have a witness you will talk about, yes.
But sir, anything you'd like me to point out, but you had a question that you wanted clear out? Why have they do that?
Well, we didn't see anything.
You saw the board, they...
So I mean, you know, I don't know, I'm sure the planning board sees presentations all the time. Is this the way it's done? Where it's only to the board?
Usually it's only one.
Usually it's only one. We went through the airhouse to show a separate one for you folks.
Right, but that could be turned a little bit so we can see what...
But they're seeing boards.
Let me turn it a little.
Tell me what's a good angle.
The board, the board, you prefer to...
The other board is going to be turned so we can see some...
But if we turn it, then they can't see what you're pointing at. Again, you're shooting.
You're done, aren't you?
Shooting. This is unique that my client has brought a separate rendering so that the audience could see it.
No, we can't see it.
Well, it's right there.
When he points to it, we can't see it.
You don't see, he's pointing to you, you certainly can see the rendering.
They're exactly the same. Maybe he didn't know that.
Look, except the planning board, Belleville Planning Board, if this is what you might find, but this is not adequate.
Usually we have one diagram, there's two, so the public can see it more clearly. I don't know what, he pointed to the glass. Do you not see the glass on the upper floor?
Sir, just to show you, they're, they're the exact same board.
I realize, but we can't see what you were pointing to.
Any other witness, public?
Good afternoon, Chief, MAFUCCI. You had stated that there was more parking than required. I was just curious, what standard is used to determine the number of parking places? Rises? Towns?
RS, I guess. We developed a plan working with the township planner, the company that they are, CNA, that is based on pretty much all of the modern traffic and parking calculations that are done and incorporate some thought about shared parking that perhaps at night residents are there more during the day than not. But then we decided to go above the yawn.
All right, thank you.
Frank Fleischman, 132 Franklin Street. Mr. Stolarz, I can appreciate that you're familiar with the property. Is Silver Lake at all, have you ever made a tour in it? Have you ever looked at some of the side streets or anything like that? Are you familiar with the neighborhood at all?
Yeah, generally familiar.
What's your impression of the neighborhood, if I may ask?
Objection. What does that have to do with the case?
Everything.
Those were the presentations, sir.
I'm glad to answer. I'm glad to answer. I think that it's a neighborhood that really is in need of and will benefit tremendously from having new development and new investment. I think the food store I showed is just doing extremely well, that people like to come to this part of town, as long as there's something there for them to come to and to go to.
What kind of buildings do you see in Silver Lake? What type of residences do you see?
Homes.
Could you get to your point, Mr. Fleischman, please?
Do you think that fits in with the neighborhood?
If you suggest that it does, and I would disagree with you, I think it fits in tremendously for the very simple reason that there aren't any other nine-acre parcel sitting vacant in the neighborhood.
How many, and this might be an architecture thing, so I apologize. How many stories are each building?
I'm sorry. So there are four residential stories on top of one commercial story, also with parking on the, on that first level. It's hidden from view, so no one sees it.
So the five stories total, essentially?
Yes.
Are you aware of any other five-story boulevards in Silver Lake?
No.
Thank you.
Ken, Sigurdsson?
I'll stand and clear. I have a question about this. Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue. I just want to ask some questions about this, okay? There's 232 rental units?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's stores, commercial properties below that, correct?
Just retail, yes. No other commercial besides you.
Okay. According to statistics, conservatively speaking, a rental unit uses five gallons of water a day. That's conservative. I don't know how much stores, commercial properties would use. For 232 rental units, that would be 1,160 gallons per day going whoosh under the street on Belmont Avenue. Are you aware that there was a water main break today on Belmont Avenue?
I'd be better to have our engineer, but again, the water main...
There was a water main break today in Belleville. Okay? I'm concerned, you said this is for the good of the neighborhood, the good of Bellevue, Silver Lake. It's pretty above ground, but you're not aware underground.
Objection.
No, it is. The water going down is a concern, isn't it?
Well, ask the question.
You said, you said objection.
Objection is you're not discussing anything that has to do with the application. The water's going to be contained through the normal process like any other house is.
The water's going to be, are you aware of all the water main breaks that happened in the last two months in Belleville? That's normal? This is an extreme concern. You're going to add 1,160 gallons of wastewater per day, that's just for the rental unit. How is it going to be handled?
We're going to put it into question.
Okay, how is that going to be handled for the good of Belleville?
We have an engineer who will...
Come up.
Well, where is he?
We have other witnesses, if you listen to my opening...
I want the, I want, I want the answer now. This is happening today, there's a flood there today, and you're talking about bringing water flooding into Belleville?
You can ask the engineer your questions about the water, Miss Higgins.
Pardon me?
You can ask the questions to the engineer if you have any questions about it.
Where is he?
He'll be presenting tonight. After he presents, you can ask your question.
How come he can't answer it?
Because he's not an engineer.
You also obviously aren't aware of this area of Silver Lake. Object all you want, Mr. Gassion, thank you. Thank you.
Carmella Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Carmella Fleishman, 132 Franklin Street.
Thank you.
I don't know, this is my first time at a, this kind of meeting, so I don't know who this question goes to. With the proposed building, the already taxed police and fire departments of this lovely little town, will they be helped in any way with the addition of the, you know, building that you're proposing?
This is, again, this is not a question for my client's answer, Mr. Chairman.
Then, excuse me? If I can be directed to who's the person to answer that question?
Probably the traffic expert, who knows about that.
Okay, okay, thank you, I'll ask him later, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public has questions?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut Street. Just have a question about the type of construction, could you elaborate somewhat in terms of what the building's bonus will be foundationally and then going up?
Sure. The foundations will be a concrete foundation, you'll be able to drive into the building and it'll be a parking level at grade. The retail is also contained within a masonry concrete structure. And that is a non-combustible structure that provides for a very safe condition at grade, so that all the way up to approximately 15, it's all concrete. And then above that, you have your typical works made in construction for the apartments, and we're using the typical type of sheet rock or something unusual. The only thing that's really unusual, the facade besides the brick and stucco, is that we have more glass, as I said, up above. And then we also have a unique feature, most of the projects you see where there aren't exposed balconies, they have these kind of fake balconies, it's called Juliet, with a railing on the outside, and we think that that looks somewhat...
Less stark.
It's stark, thank you, that's a good word. So what we did is, together with our architects, we developed an invisible rail, which is actually a glass rail inside the slider window built in, so it opens the sliders there, but you can see when you look at the building, you can't tell where they are. So that's just one of the unique features of all the glass on the top of it.
So then the ground floor parking would be behind the commercial?
Yes.
So the storefronts are, I guess, the shallower depth and then all parking behind it?
No, I think our architect will show you, maybe not being too clear, in the very front of that building that faces Belmont, that entire lower level, the part that is parallel to Belmont, is completely retail. The leg of that building that runs perpendicular has parking.
Just to the public, we're talking about this right here?
Right, that is all retail, and then the other leg of the building that returns perpendicular?
Back here?
This portion of the building that returns perpendicular?
Oh, okay.
This has all parking under it. This building has retail only in the very front, and from here on, it's all parking.
So then this will be shallowed out in this point, you're going to have parking behind this, interior?
No, no, sir, I'm sorry, it's not shallow out at all, it is about 65 feet.
Okay. But on ground four, you do have, you have parking?
Parking in all the other sections where the retail is not.
Okay. And wood, construction in the residential above the ground first floor to whatever degree, the masonry rise, as you said, 15 feet?
It's approximately 15 feet to what's called a podium. The podium is a three hour rated concrete separation, and in addition, we're using a full, I forget the exact code, the architect will tell us, 13A, that's what it's called, for all strength during of the entire building.
Michael Sheldon, just one other quick question, does this project currently have, will you be seeking a pilot from the township?
It does not currently have anything in place, but the plan is, because it is a redevelopment project under Jersey law, we would seek to have a pilot program that will be for a number of years to be determined. The amount of total pilot payments that the township will receive eventually will be substantially more than the current taxes paid only on the food store.
No one else from the public has any questions?
I've got a question. You're going to have 232 units, so you're allowing 174 spaces. The average couple have two cars each, so you're talking about 464 cars?
We don't have 174 spaces, we have more than that. I wasn't talking about the numbers and I'd rather not take that away from...
We have experts, our engineers.
...to talk about the numbers. Mr. Kennedy, and I think he can give you the specific, we have many more spaces than that.
Well, it's listed here, you have more, you have 188 non-residential and 174 spaces for residential, which comes to 487. So I'm just saying, I don't know how many spots you're allowing for your tenants, but if a tenant has one or two or three cars, where are they going to park those cars if they can't park them on the property?
I really don't want to give Mr. Byrnes testimony, he's a certified civil engineer, I'm not, a licensed engineer.
Mr. Kennedy, the engineer will testify as to parking, and as I asked my client, we provide more than the required parking, that is the requirement of the redevelopment plan. To my recollection, 125 spaces more than are required, I believe. I'll have the experts testify.
That's the way you look at it by the thing, but if people rent apartments there and they have two cars per family, they're not going to have enough space.
Well, the only thing I would add, just, I think it's a valid question to one extent that I can answer, the rest I think our engineer can help you with. For approximately 70% of these apartments, it's as much likely as it would be a single person as a couple, and for about 40% of them, it's almost undoubtedly designed really for a single person. We're really trying to provide a way also for the younger folks in this community and nearby communities to be able to come here, take advantage of the light rail, and get a reasonable monthly rent payment or two.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gassion, would you like to proceed?
Mr. Rossman, what's your business address?
181 Washington Street, Conshohocken, Pennsylvania.
Your occupation?
I'm an architect.
How long practicing in the field of architecture?
31 years.
And from what school did you graduate and what degree did you obtain?
From the University of New Mexico. I have both a bachelor of arts in architecture and a master as well.
Are you a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
A member of any society or professional groups connected with your work?
Yes, I am, I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects. I'm also a member of the National Council of Architectural Registration Boards. I'm accredited as a lead accredited professional.
We'll accept your witness as an expert.
Thank you. Mr. Rossman, would you describe the site?
Yes, I will. The, the site consists of, Belleville Midsite consists of three buildings, there's the existing...
No, describe the existing site.
Existing, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, the existing site has the 55,000 square foot grocery store with a field of parking and some landscape area around the parking lot.
Okay, and would you describe the existing structure on the site?
Yes, it's a one-story grocery store, approximately 55,000 square feet.
Any alterations going to be made to that structure?
Yes, there are proposed alterations to the structure.
Okay, let's identify what that is so we can mark it into evidence.
Mark this one on camera.
And that'd be A2.
A2. A2 is a rendering of the proposed improvements to the existing grocery store.
Okay, and would you explain those alterations, those planned alterations?
Yes, I will. In addition to patching and repairing the existing bulkhead that runs along the length of the front of the grocery store, which is pictured, the existing grocery store is pictured in the lower right-hand corner of exhibit A2. In addition to cleaning and repairing the stucco and repainting it, we propose to construct three tower elements at the corners of the existing north facade, plus one in the middle that designates the entry to the grocery store. Those structures are composed of cast stone and brick and stucco to match the existing building, and a metal parapet cap that will be needed to match the materials of the new proposed buildings. As well as improvements down the Belmont Avenue side of the grocery store, that will be composed of, again, cast stone and brick and stucco to match this building and also tie in being the same materials as the proposed buildings.
How many new structures are proposed?
Two new structures are proposed.
And do you have a rendering that you can use to help you describe the proposed L-shaped structure?
Yes, I do, I'm going to revert back to exhibit A1.
And please describe the...
Okay.
...L-shaped structure.
The L-shaped structure, which is in the middle of the rendering that you see here is a four-story residential building with a story of commercial and parking use on ground four. The building is set back off of Belmont Avenue with the short leg of the building facing Belmont Avenue. And it's set back such that it's placed over 135 feet from the face of the structures across the street. The primary materials of the building, the exterior building envelope materials that you see are primarily cast stone on the base on the ground level, brick, stucco, horizontal siding, and glass. And what we've done with the design of that building is really taken a lot of effort in breaking up the planes of the building to articulate the building in a much more palatable residential scale. That was really our guiding, our guiding attempt to give the building a residential scale. So there's manipulation of the planes in and out, there's different materials in different parts of the building, so it reads at a smaller, more residential scale. In the base of the building, as Mr. Stoller's pointed out, there's 15,187 square feet of commercial space that, again, faces Belmont Avenue. And then on the long leg of the L that continues back towards the west, the ground floor houses parking, resident parking. The other part of the building that I want to point out, that's an important design factor, is the clear story level at the top, that's the glass story that we talked about earlier, that was done intentionally to really almost height itself as an extra story, so that the, again, the residential scale of that building is kept as small as possible. And then at the top of the building is a pitched standing seam metal roof with dormer components to break down the scale and, again, give the building a residential feel.
Would you describe the proposed linear building?
Yes, I will. The linear building, which is along the north side of the site and parallels the light rail tracks, is the same height as the first building I described, which is four levels of residential over a single level of combined commercial and parking. Although the height's the same, the layout's a little bit different in that at the front of the building, the retail, commercial part of the building is a single story, which then steps back to a second story resident lounge, and then steps back to the five-story building behind that. So the presentation on Belmont Avenue is stepped back, it's not the full height of the building on the street side. It does continue the commercial aspect so that the street frontage is that activated commercial presentation. And all the parking is further behind, and none of the parking that's below either building is visible from the street, and that was very intentional on our part. It has the same standing seam metal roof that presents both the front and the backside of the building.
How many total units are proposed?
232 rental units.
And what is the makeup of those units?
The makeup of the units is, there are 20 micro units, 20 studio apartments, 108 one-bedroom apartments, and 84 two-bedroom apartments.
And does that mix of apartments comply with the redevelopment plan?
Yes, it does.
And does the entire project comply with the redevelopment plan?
Yes, it does.
Are the buildings ADA compliant?
Yes, they are.
Would you review the proposed retail space and the size of that space?
Yes, I will. The retail on the L-shaped building is 15,187 square feet, and retail space on the linear building is 4,630 square feet.
And there was some discussion about whether or not there was parking behind the retail space. Is there any parking directly behind the retail space?
Yes, in both buildings, there's parking behind the retail spaces.
And what is the depth of the retail space?
The depth of the retail space on the L-shaped building is approximately 65 feet. On the linear building, the depth of the retail space is approximately 95 feet. linear building, the depth of the retail space is approximately 95 feet.
And how will the waste or garbage generated from the site be contained and disposed of?
It will be contained in enclosed areas. Each building has a trash chute that is accessible to the tenants, but then the trash goes down, it's collected in a trash room and trash compactor room on the ground floor of the building that's completely enclosed and will be accessible to the sanitation removal only when they come, it won't be visible except when it's being removed.
And have you had an opportunity to review the planners' and engineers' reports?
Yes, I have.
Any comments on either of those reports?
I want to point out that on the planning report, we comply fully with the planning comments under number eight, specifically the architectural items D, F, and G, where D is energy conservation measures, and what we plan to provide is energy star appliances, LED lighting, and low-flow toilets, and generally comply with all energy-related codes. Item F talks about the features, the site features of pedestrian walkways, washwood-planted interior courtyard, and the second-floor deck, the tenant deck, so we comply with those items. And finally, the request that we provide a color rendering of the east face of the building, which would suggest...
Exhibit A1. I have no further questions. This witness, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have questions? Quick question about the trash. Should we also recycle?
I'm going to have to defer to someone else.
I'm sorry.
There's actually an operational issue regarding recycling.
With the, you mentioned the trash pickup and trash chutes.
I will have one of the other witnesses testify as to recycling proposed.
Operation of the retail space?
Yes.
Number of employees...
I'm sorry?
Number of employees in the retail space. I don't think there's been...
We're unable to answer that question at this time.
Until tenants are designated.
How is the trash for the retail handled? You mentioned the residential house is true. How is the retail, is this different to the trash?
I don't think until such time as they know who the tenant is, for example, a gym is not really going to have much trash, and a coffee shop wouldn't have that much more either, but I'll try to call the engineer or one of the other witnesses to see if they can give you more details as to that.
Other board members have a question? We'll open it to the public. Questions of this witness?
David Nanyor. So, I too am concerned about...
Could you just answer so we could all hear you, please? Thank you.
No one ever complains about being unable to hear me. I'm concerned about the recycling again. You have a trash chute, so people are going to shove the recyclables down the trash chutes with the trash.
Again, I indicated the engineer will testify with regard to that, so this gentleman's not prepared to answer that question.
Architect doesn't know? You don't know that, sir?
He's not, I just said he's not prepared to answer that question.
Well, has there been any architectural design for recyclables?
That would be a level of detail that we would refine as we move forward.
So clearly, you're not ready to really present all this to the board.
Objection. That is not, this is not required to be detailed drawings, and working drawings are prepared when an applicant submits for a building permit. This is for site plan approved.
Somebody mentioned something like 65-foot deep. Is that like some sort of footings?
No, that's a depth, a planned depth from the front of the building to the back.
Oh, okay.
65 feet.
And so these structures are going to be on concrete?
Yes.
And what is in the soil under the concrete?
Objection. There'll be an environmental gentleman testifying with regard to soil. This witness did not discuss soil and is not prepared to answer that question.
And you showed the grocery store?
Yes.
I don't understand where the grocery store is in relation to all of these buildings.
This is the front portion, the front third of the grocery store that you see. The grocery store continues behind this building.
Mr. Rasmussen, what exhibit are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I'm referring to exhibit A1. And I was pointing to this. This is the part of the, the front part of the grocery store that you can see in the construction.
Do you have any, do you have any bird's eye diagrams? Can you show it better?
Yes.
So the current picture right here is Belmont Avenue right there?
This is Belmont. Yeah. I think he wanted to see in relation, I'm going to see if I can pull up the site plan.
Yes, okay. So in relation to the new, the two new buildings?
Can we get that one?
I'm sorry, this will be...
What are you referring to, Mr. Rasmussen?
We need to mark this one. We need to mark this one.
Yes.
A3. Exhibit A3.
And what is, just briefly describe what it is that's being marked as A3.
It's a rendered landscaping plan, which is also a...
I use that to answer the question.
So this is the footprint of the existing grocery store. Footprint of the existing grocery store. This is the L-shaped new structure. The L-shaped new structure. And then the linear new building.
Right now, where the, is the path right now?
It's a super fresh.
Okay. The parking lot is much larger right now.
Correct.
The L-shaped structure will be on top of what is now the parking lot?
Yes, over, over what's a portion of the existing parking lot. That's correct.
And what about solar, solar energy? Are you going to be using any solar powered structures?
None is proposed at this time.
And these will all be rentals?
Yes.
And I don't know if this is a question for the architect, but will there be pet-friendly?
Yes, an entity has a dog park at the rear of the site.
And there's an octagonal-shaped building out at the corner?
Yes.
What is it? I'm a citizen.
That is a tenant lounge. It's a multi-purpose room for the, for the use of the tenants.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Is this it? Ms. Higgins?
Do I have to state my name again?
Yes.
Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue, available in New Jersey. Okay, I understand about the garbage being compacted, gone down a chute in the building, correct?
Correct.
All right, then it'll be stored there until it's taken away?
Correct.
What about the supermarket? Are there any going to be any structures to cover the garbage bins? I mean, how is that going to be handled? Now, because the average supermarket per year throws away 40% of their products, so are there going to be any containment of the garbage on the site?
The supermarket is currently operating...
I'm asking him.
The supermarket is currently operating at that location.
Oh, then answer the question. Is it being covered now? Is it going to be, continue being covered or uncovered?
I don't recall a condition of the existing garbage at the grocery store.
Well, do you think it would be beneficial toward the township of Belville to have something added like that to your plans? You know, so it wouldn't be an eyesore, you know, vermin, rats, garbage?
I think we can, I think we can consider that.
Is that reasonable, reasonable request? You know, to keep the rats and garbage out of Belville? Is that reasonable? Yes or no?
That's a, that's a reasonable request.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public have questions of this witness?
Come on, Fleishman, again. Okay, walk me through this. I'm sorry. The building serves the, is the grocery store slash supermarket?
Correct.
Okay, the little green, little trees right there. Parking lot or green trees?
It's a parking lot with islands that have trees planted in.
Okay, then we're going off, we're coming back towards the L-shaped, but we're coming towards the light rail. So there's open space there, there's an existing business there, and then there's the light rail. Am I clo...
There's no existing business between the grocery store and the light rail. The property abuts the light rail.
Okay, but there is, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a building there, correct?
No.
All right, I'm on Franklin, I'm on Belmont. Gas station, right, probably with me. Okay, light rails, building.
He's answering the question and saying there is no building there.
Okay, but that's what I'm trying to figure out. I'm trying to figure out where you're going to put this thing, because, right, but...
There's a diagram that shows where it's going to go.
Okay, I, I know, I know I'm not losing my mind. I know there's a building there.
Building's on the other side of the light rail.
At the far edge of our site, what exists is an access roadway that gets back to the PECG site in the back.
Okay.
The Pulizzi Building is on the other side of the tracks.
Right.
This is taking place, far side of the tracks.
Okay.
There's no other building other than the current...
Okay, thank you. That's what, that's where, like I said, that's where I was getting through shoes on. I, you just said the Pulizzi Building. I'm like, wait a minute, I know there's a building there. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Michael Sheldon, 47th Fledge here. Just one quick question. In the event of a fire in the interior portion of your development, in that triangular section, is there enough space for emergency vehicles, in particular fire department trucks, to get into that area? It looks like it's...
Yes.
This area, just green space. I don't, I want to make sure there's...
It was specifically designed to fit the width of a fire truck to drive through. There's a path with breakaway gates that a fire truck can access fully through the entire...
Any other questions from the public?
Is this that light wood construction?
It's wood frame, wood stud frame construction for the top four stories.
Are the four children lightweight truss construction?
It would be either truss joists or trusses.
Or?
Or possibly dimensional framing. And we would, we would figure that out in the detailed construction drawings.
You're the architect. You haven't designed it to that extent?
Not to that level of detail. We will, when, before we build the building, it will be detailed very precisely.
You're from Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Are you aware of the older slight weight wood construction that's been going on in New Jersey? In regards to the many platters?
Oh, yes, I am, yeah, yep.
But you tell me you don't know if you're going to be using it?
Oh, we will be using wood.
Talk about the lightweight truss. What are your thoughts? Are there going to be open trusses?
Possibly, yeah.
Any other questions in the public?
I have a public, and that is, is there any consideration for the electrical usage? There's a power grid, and we're warned by PSCNG now that there could be, you know, a loss of power. Won't, won't the power for this complex take away from the power of the people living in the Silver Lake neighborhood?
We would work with PSCNG to make absolutely sure that there is sufficient power.
And that goes for all utilities? Water, sewers?
Yeah, we would work with the, the appropriate utility company and make sure that the service is compliant.
If there's no further questions from the public of this witness, we'd like to give our, take a five-minute break, give our sonata for a little break.
One of our members would like to make his stand here.
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself.
He lives around the corner from the property. Just use the microphone.
Everybody can hear you.
Well, we hear you.
He's recusing himself because he lives around the corner from the property.
Yes, I'd like to call my next witness, Mr. Byer.
Please state your name and tell your license. Robert M. Byer, B.Y.R.A.N.
Mr. Byer, what's your business address?
From the firm of Dresner-Robin, 55 Lane Road, Fairfield, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
I'm a professional engineer.
How long have you practiced in the field of engineering?
Over 20 years, providing professional testimony since 2010.
From what school did you graduate and what degree did you take?
I have a bachelor's of science in natural science and civil engineering.
Are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Briefly give the board the benefit of some of your experience, briefly.
Certainly. I have testified somewhere between 20 and 25 land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey on a variety of projects from industrial to mixed-use, most recently in Wayne Township for a warehouse facility.
Remember any societies or professional groups connected where you work?
American Society of Civil Engineers.
Mr. Chairman, I submit that Mr. Byer is qualified as an expert in the field of engineering.
We accept your witness as an expert.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Byer, did you prepare the engineering site plan for the proposed project?
Yes.
Would you review the location of the property?
Sir.
I'm going to mark this as exhibit A4. A4 is also mounted on this drawing here. This is titled a site vicinity map prepared by Dresner-Robin and is dated March 29, 2018. For the purposes of the board and for members of the audience, the top portion of the drawing is the west, the bright side of the drawing is north, the bottom side of the drawing is east, and the left side of the drawing is considered south. This is an aerial exhibit taking around 2000 and, excuse me, from 2016 of the site in question along with the vicinity of the area. The center, approximate center of the drawing is a yellow-shaped area with a dark yellow shading within it. This represents the property in question. The heavy blue line represents the municipal line. On the norally portion of the property is the existing New Jersey Transit light rail line. To the east of the property or towards the bottom of the drawing is Belmont Avenue, and across the street is a... and across the street is a mix of residential uses. To the south or the left side of the property in question is an automotive storage facility. And to the north, which is also the common, uh, boundary line between Belleville Township and Bloomfield, is, uh, the existing PSENG substation facility.
What's the lot configuration in the site?
The lot configuration is approximately nine point four-nine acres and it's an irregular shaped property.
And would you describe the existing improvements on the site?
Certainly. The existing grocery store that we have talked about previously is shown as a somewhat rectangular existing building on the property on the left side of the drawing or the south side of the property. And the darker area to the right of the building or to the north of the building is the existing parking area that's out there presently today. The area that's shown in green, which are approximately two triangles, one to the, uh, the, the left, or excuse me, towards the top of the building or the west side of the building, and to the right of the parking area or to the north of the parking area are the existing vacant areas. Those areas were previously occupied by the Edison Battery Development that we talked about previously. Those areas were, uh, decommissioned and deconstructed sometime between the late nineteen sixties, early nineteen seventies, based on review of, uh, of, excuse me, historic areas. That area has remained vacant and is right now, um, currently just well-maintained lawn with some minor scrub and wooded area along the norally portion of the property. In addition, on the property, uh, as you can see on the right side of the property or towards the north side of the property adjacent to the light rail is a narrow, approximately about twenty foot wide, twenty-four foot wide compacted gravel driveway. This is a driveway that provides access from Belmont Avenue to the existing PSENG facility. PSENG is permitted to cross the property by way of a fifty-foot wide, uh, agreement, uh, easement agreement. This easement agreement, um, has not only the purposes of accessing the property, but it also contains underground minor service utilities to the property itself, such as, uh, sanitary lateral, water service, and gas main. There's also along the norally line some, uh, overhead wires that provide electric service to, to the PSENG facility.
Would you describe the proposed site plan?
Certainly. I'm gonna refer back to exhibit A three. And again, for the purposes of the board and the public, uh, the configuration of this drawing is the same as that of the prior exhibit. The top of the drawing is gonna be considered west. The right side of the drawing is north. The bottom side of the drawing is east. The left side of the drawing is south. On the south or the left side of the property is the existing grocery store building, which is approximately fifty-five thousand five hundred square feet. It's a little difficult to see on this exhibit of A three, but it is prominent on exhibit A four and was observed by our site visit. Uh, there is an existing, uh, trash compactor and enclosure on the rear side of the building or on the westerly side of the building away from Belmont Avenue and completely screened from the public. The proposed, the two new buildings that are proposed are towards the right side of the drawing or the north side of the property. The long rectangular building, uh, is identified as building A. The L-shaped building is identified as building B. The retail area that we previously discussed is along Belmont Avenue and is labeled as retail. To the left or the west side of each of those retail areas on this exhibit and in the, uh, the drawings that have been presented to the board are dashed lines which are indicative of the parking that is below the building itself. Um, the site is proposing to, um, have access from Belmont Avenue. And let me just, uh, back up one second just to describe this exhibit a little more. Exhibit A three is titled rendered site and landscape plan. This is just a color rendering of the drawings that were previously presented to the board and included in the public. Um, there's only one exception to that, and that is the, um, the addition of a crosswalk along Belmont Avenue, which I'll get to a little further in my testimony. So again, staying on the right side of the drawing, on the north side, um, are the two buildings. Again, we've gone through extensive testimony as far as the quantities and how much, uh, uh, how much retail and residential space there is. Again, as a reminder that the residential mixed use is fully compliant with the redevelopment plan and the specific percentages that are required. Between the two buildings, between buildings A and B, is a heavily landscaped courtyard. This is one of the amenities that was discussed previously. And, uh, again, pointing to in-between buildings A and B, just wanna make sure everybody can see, uh, the green area with some of the circles that are colored. That is a landscaped courtyard area. This is a amenity that is provided to the, uh, future residents of the building should the application be approved. This is a controlled access to the courtyard by way of gates and fences, um, along with security, uh, through the garage entrance. So it's only for residents of the facility. You can see within this exhibit and also on the drawings, there is a dashed black line which sort of resembles an S shape. That shows the limits of the emergency access. I believe there was a question previously from the public about emergency access to the buildings in case of a fire. Uh, that is intended to be emergency access with a turf reinforcement, uh, which provides for the safety of a truck to get through there. I know I had said previously that this is a secured entrance. However, we are proposing on both the east and the west sides of that, uh, accessway, a double swing gate which will have a chain on it that can be locked or that can be cut, or should the fire department elect, they can have one of those, uh, fire boxes that are seen commonly throughout commercial properties. That will allow adequate access for a fire truck or an ambulance to get through between the buildings. In addition, the site has been designed so that, uh, emergency vehicles can fully, uh, circulate around the property without any type of impedances. Intended loading for the, uh, grocery store remains to, is proposed to remain unchanged. Unchanged, excuse me. Uh, it is intended that the, uh, trucks delivering to the grocery store will access the property, uh, along the left side or the south side of the property as they do now, circulate in a westerly direction towards the top or the west side of the, of the property, and, uh, then circulate in a clockwise direction out of the property uh, between buildings, between the existing grocery store and building B. As you can see from this exhibit, uh, A three, one of the, the, uh, one of the norally landscaped islands is offset from, towards the south slightly with a striped island. The intention of that is for the purposes of a tractor-trailer that's serving, uh, deliveries to the grocery store, they can fully circulate around, um, the, uh, the property and circulate around this island. The intention is to have the tractor-trailer circulate uh, adjacent to or just south of building B. And we feel that that is, uh, adequate from a safety perspective to the public as there is a sidewalk that is proposed along that building B line, along the south of building B. So it keeps pedestrians out of the driveway and keeps them away from the truck traffic. In addition to pedestrian circulation, you can see on the drawing from left to right or from south to north, there is a proposed six-foot-wide elevated concrete sidewalk uh, that's gonna have landscaping on each side. This sidewalk area provides for a direct safe access for residents uh, from the two buildings to get to the grocery store. Also provides means and methods of, uh, pedestrian safety for those who are parking close to, uh, that sidewalk area. And it's been intended that the site has been designed so that pedestrians with any type of disabilities, uh, in means of accessibility, uh, can access this area and have a more direct safe route to the grocery store. Uh, just continuing around the property itself, um, on the norally portion, or excuse me, the westerly portion of the property, as we can see, there are three rectangular green areas. The two larger rectangular green areas are cupboard parking for, um, anybody who's coming to the site. Uh, these areas, we're referring to them in our reports or drawings as, uh, car, uh, carports or canopies. Um, each of these are intended to be constructed with a vegetated roof uh, that's gonna be landscaped and it's gonna be irrigated. Uh, the intention of that is twofold, well, threefold. One is to provide a means of, uh, protecting vehicles for patrons or residents of the property. Uh, the second is to reduce the amount of impervious cover, therefore being beneficial by reducing stormwater volume. And thirdly, uh, a benefit of it is, um, from a site sustainability perspective of helping reduce that heat island effect that is discussed so frequently. With respect to emergency power and power itself that was discussed earlier and brought up by some of the, uh, public, um, the applicant is required to meet with PSENG and submit a service application. Uh, it is PSENG's requirement to review that application and ensure that there is adequate capacity to serve these developments. In the instances where, uh, where power may go out, uh, the applicant is proposing emergence, excuse me, emergency generators uh, to each of the buildings. On the norally side of the property, or excuse me, again, strike that. Westerly side of the property or towards the top of the drawing is a rectangular area that's identified as a dog park. This is a run area, uh, that's intended for those who are canine friendly and are gonna have those within the building itself. With, uh, respect to continuing with pedestrian safety, uh, the applicant is proposing, uh, two pull-off areas or recessed areas adjacent to each of the buildings. They're identified on exhibit A three as a white-strike area uh, and labeled as a loading zone. The intention of this loading zone is for people moving in and out, pizza deliveries, et cetera, where, you know, they can quickly get off of the road area uh, and be out of, uh, uh, out of the traffic way. Uh, last, last but not least, with respect to some of the site elements, uh, there was some discussion with respect to trash. There has been discussions, we're very early on in the architecturals. Typically, you don't go into a lot of detail, design of that sort, until you know that, um, you're going to potentially receive a, a positive approval of a drawing. However, there has been discussions that internally on each floor are dedicated trash rooms. Within each of those trash rooms are separated chutes, one for recycling, one for garbage. So those garbage areas go down to that trash area, um, where then they get compacted and they get managed by private haulers. We are also proposing a refuse and recycling area on the norally side of the property. We're envisioning that it's gonna be a, uh, smaller area that's gonna contain some, uh, smaller dumpsters. That is for the purposes of the retail uses. And again, the retail uses will provide, are going to take their trash over to that recycling area. There were also some questions earlier in regards to utilities, and I'll just, uh, go through them briefly. First foremost, stormwater management. A property like this with the addition of impervious cover on the property is gonna generate more stormwater runoff. However, it is the responsible, responsibility of the applicant in accordance with New Jersey regulations and township ordinances that they meet certain standards. Uh, you may hear the term major development. Major development is a defined term by the New Jersey Stormwater Rules that state that when a property disturbs one or more acres, it must provide, it must meet certain requirements for stormwater regulation. Those requirements include groundwater recharge, groundwater quantity or the volume of water, and groundwater quality. Um, I'll just hit each of those individually. Groundwater recharge. The intent of groundwater recharge is that when you provide a development and you're converting area in which water can infiltrate into the ground uh, to a hard surface that reduces that time or the amount of water it can get, uh, recharged, um, you're to provide areas where you recharge some of that water to make your terms such as dry wells, seepage pits, et cetera. There are certain aspects of the regulation, though, that allow, that state that you are not to require, you're not required to provide, uh, certain recharge in certain instances. And this is one of those instances where we've talked about that, um, the area it has, is known to be, uh, impacted with groundwater issues which will be addressed by, uh, the project's LSRP or the Licensed Site Remediation Professional. So we made a request of the township, um, to waive that requirement, which is permitted by the DEP. Uh, and the town is of the opinion that, um, groundwater recharge should not be incorporated into this project 'cause you don't wanna exacerbate any situation that may be underlying there. The second is with respect to ground, uh, excuse me, stormwater volume or quantity. Though not visible on these drawings of A three, exhibit A three, because they're subsurface. Um, we have designed two subsurface stormwater detention systems. One is a dedicated system strictly for areas to manage stormwater from roof runoff, from the courtyard areas, sidewalks, landscape areas. The reason that we're segregating that stormwater from other areas is because under stormwater regulations by the state, you do not need to provide treatment to that runoff. That area is along the westerly portion of the property, and again, it's subsurface, it's below, um, the surface. Also, within the westerly portion of the property is a second stormwater basin. That second basin is going to collect stormwater that's conveyed there by a, you know, your typical stormwater management system. Catch basins and pipes gets conveyed over to that system. That system is considered the type of runoff that needs to be treated based on the state regulations. The, uh, based on calculations that the minimum requirement of what's referred to as total suspended solid removal is seventy-four percent, we're actually treating up to eighty percent. So we're actually exceeding the stormwater volume. The stormwater basins, what the purpose of them is like a bathtub in your house. It retains the volume of water and it allows it to go off or allows it to leave the system at a controlled rate. And the whole purpose of that is that you're not causing any detrimental impact to properties within the area, to the downstream stormwater management system. And the state has very specific criteria of how you do that. And the way in which you do that is we hold all the water back and we provide a controlled release. That controlled release actually has to be less than what is, um, currently running off of the property now. And if you actually think about it, a third of this property is already grassy, it's vacant, so there's not a lot of stormwater running off. So the fact that we actually have to hold back more of that water to reduce it is actually even more beneficial than what you would see in any other type of redevelopment project, especially the ones that I've done lately throughout Essex, Hudson, and, and, uh, Passaic County. Uh, from a sewer perspective, there is, uh, sanitary laterals that will convey sanitary flow towards the systems within Belmont Avenue. Um, it is the applicant's responsibility to seek approvals, not from this board, but from other, uh, entities. Um, they submit what is known as a, um, Treatment Works Approval or a TWA to the DEP. That approval application process has multiple aspects to it. Uh, the first is it has to get reviewed by the sewer department. And when the sewer department reviews it, they confirm that there's adequate capacity to convey that flow in the existing systems within Belmont Avenue and downstream of the property as it leaves the city and flows towards Newark. The second level of review comes from the Passaic Valley Sewer Treatment Authority or Passaic Valley Sewer Commissioners. That's the wastewater treatment plant. They review it to say, alright, the amount of volume of sewage that's coming off of this property that's going to the treatment facility, we have enough capacity to treat that water. So they need to sign off on it. Once you get through those two levels, then you submit it to the state. Once you get through those two levels, then you submit it to the state, and the state reviews it as a tertiary review, and they're the ones who issue the ultimate approval. Should the state issue that approval, then the applicant can go and apply for building permits, et cetera. From a water perspective, the water within this area is managed by Newark Water Utilities. We will have to make a similar permit application to the Water Department of Newark. They will confirm that there's adequate capacity within the system. Everything that's going to be proposed onsite to the new buildings is all new utilities and connecting to the existing utilities within Belmont Avenue. And just lastly, just to wrap up my testimony, one of the key elements within the redevelopment plan is the need to incorporate sustainable design. So I'd just like to hit, just for the board, just some items with respect to sustainable elements. First is, one of the most important things that we see is the revitalization of an underutilized property. This is a property that has been vacant for quite a while. It's in need of redevelopment. The redevelopment will provide a benefit to the public as far as with respect to environmental aspects of addressing contaminated soil and waters, which will be addressed by the LSRP. The second is the incorporation of LED or efficient lighting. I discussed previous, I discussed the stormwater runoff with respect to reducing the peak discharge from the property. One of the other items I would just like to address is up near the carport areas, towards the westerly portion of the property, the curb on the westerly side of the carport area is actually a flush curb. And the whole intention of that is to allow stormwater runoff within all this paved area to be conveyed over a grass area. And that actually provides multiple benefits as it helps reduce some of the suspended solids that we talked about previously, helps remove some of the nutrients, and it actually knocks off some of the peak discharge rate coming off the property. The selection of landscape, which will be addressed by the landscape architect, has been strategically selected for the purposes of sustainable design. We are also including an adequate amount of, more than adequate amount of shady trees throughout the surface parking area. This provides multiple benefits, especially with respect to that heat island effect that I discussed earlier. Lastly is transportation. Due to the proximity of the light rail station which is off of this drawing, it's to the north of the property or beyond the bright side of the drawing there, it can be seen on exhibit A4. Due to the close proximity, it's intended that you're going to have less cars commuting, reducing some potential carbon footprint and air pollution. Now, one thing I'd like to just address previously from what councilman had said earlier is with respect to the amount of parking that's on the property. During the early discussions of this, there was actually some discussions from township officials that actually wanted less parking in parks. They wanted less parking on the property. And due to the applicant's experience and understanding the needs of their properties, they requested and they fought and they provided documentation that convinced the officials that went into the eventual redevelopment plan to hit certain ratios. And so there is certainly adequate parking on here to meet the needs of the proposed development. And again, just in closing, just to remind the board members and the audience that it is a fully conforming plan. There's been a lot of configuration going on, background with the applicant, the architect, design officials, and we're very, very excited to be here for this.
Is your client considering any additional carports?
Yes, there is some discussion at this time. They're evaluating the potential of introducing additional carports over these five parking stall blocks for a total of around 60 parking stalls. The intention of that is that they're going to provide additional shelter protection for some vehicles there, as well as it doesn't add any type of additional impervious cover to the property.
Are there bike racks any place on the site?
Yes, thank you. On the westerly side or the top side of the drawing, for the benefit of the public, you can see a small rectangular area adjacent to the dog park. These are the bike rack storage areas, also referred to as a bike depot. These areas are intended also to be vegetated roof for purposes of reducing storms.
Would you review the site lighting, please?
Certainly. The applicant is proposing to construct all-new lighting throughout the surface parking area. One of the items that was discussed in the engineering review letter is the light poles that are within the surface parking area and a request to ship them into some of the landscape islands. Those lights are proposed to be elevated above the finished grade by about two feet on a concrete pillar. It's our intention to keep them where they are and not ship them into the landscape area for two reasons. One, we're concerned about meeting the minimum light levels that are necessary. Right now, the plan fully conforms with the requirements of the township. By shifting those lights, it's going to actually reduce those light levels, which may require the introduction of additional lights. Kind of takes away from providing that more efficient approach that's specified within the redevelopment plan. Secondly, it may impact the growth and location of some of the shady trees that we discussed earlier. In our opinion, because these lights are being proposed two feet above finished grade on a pedestal, they're not going to cause any type of impedance to site circulation or pedestrian safety.
Discuss the proposed ingress and egress and site lines or site driveways.
Certainly. Along Belmont Avenue, we are proposing to maintain, excuse me, there are right now currently Yes, there are three. There's three, there's three full-service driveways along Belmont Avenue to the property. One is on the west side of the drawing, near the grocery store, and then there are two others along Belmont Avenue. There's actually a fourth driveway that sort of gets missed because it's the gravel driveway to the PSCNG facility. The applicant is proposing to provide improvements to those existing site driveways, as well as adding an additional site driveway to the north of Honus Street. And then just staying within that area and talking about site circulation, please forgive me, I said I would address this earlier. In review of the application documents after we submitted them to the board, we identified that we didn't put on that connection to the light rail. So what we are proposing is a proposed crosswalk on the north side of Honus Street, near the intersection of Honus and Belmont Avenue, in which pedestrians can safely cross Belmont Avenue to have access to the sidewalk and then a direct connection to the light rail.
Review the parking location and number of spaces?
The gray area shown on the drawing is the proposed surface area, the asphalt area, and the white lines on the drawing identify all of the proposed parking areas. There are certain areas that are identified as blue painted lines. Those are the accessible parking areas. Those are included in the total count. And there are three, a minimum of 362 spaces required based on the standards of the redevelopment plan. The applicant is proposing a total of 487 spaces throughout the property, and that is inclusive of 88 spaces below buildings A and B.
Have you had an opportunity to review the township planners and township engineers reports?
Yes.
And do you have any comments which you heard either of those reports?
No.
Able to comply?
Yes.
No further questions, Mr. Sheldon?
I have a question. Any project of this size, my main concern is fire, fire prevention. What steps have you taken, how do the architect briefly says, makes the old buildings that be sprinkled, a sprinkle system?
I cannot testify to the architectural or the fire protection system. However, it is standard practice and it's going to be required by code that fire prevention be provided within the buildings. We are going, have requested comments from the fire department. We're waiting for those as well. And again, from a site circulation perspective, we certainly provide adequate access between the two buildings for fire truck circulation.
And the cars that be parking underneath, that area will, I guess, be concrete or some fireproof material?
I would assume yes. And again, that's...
Going backwards, these buildings are sprinkled, for sure.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
A husband and wife and their daughter rent a two-bedroom apartment, and all three of them have a car. How many spots do they have?
That would be a question for management, and I'll put a management person back on to try to answer that.
Do they, I guess you wouldn't answer it either. Do they rent the spots out or not?
Can you give me one second to consult?
Yeah. I'm just asking if they're going to rent the spots.
The owner's representative can provide additional discussion, necessary, but he did tell me that there will be leasing restrictions as to the number of vehicles that can be provided by each unit.
So that means the daughter and the wife's car will be on the streets somewhere.
I can't testify to that, sir.
Because we have a lot of apartments in Belville that now rent out their parking spots. So when the tenants don't want to pay, they end up on the streets. So I still say you don't have enough parking. All right, thank you.
Emergency access that goes through the, sorry, the emergency access road that goes through the courtyard?
Yes.
You said that's for fire and ambulance. For fires, what are the locations of fire hydrants if needed, if there's a fire?
Again, the whole fire system has not been designed. It will be reviewed by the fire subcode official, and as they make recommendations, they'll certainly incorporate them onto the plan. Oh, I surrender.
I think there definitely should be a fire hydrant somewhere along.
Mr. Walsh, it is normal practice in a project of this nature for the fire department to take a careful look at it and make recommendations that the where fire hydrants have to be installed. And my client, of course, would understand that.
And the carports that are being considered along the north?
Yes, sir.
That's additional structures which are going to be on the public service right-of-way?
Well, just to be clear, it's not a public right-of-way?
Not public service, right.
When you say public service, are you referring to the PSCNG?
Yes.
Okay. It's not a PSCNG right-of-way. It's an easement, and it's a non-exclusive easement, which does not restrict the property owner from constructing anything within that easement. And certainly, as good neighbors, we have already reached out to PSCNG to sit with them and review the application.
Mr. Walsh, that's covered. Any other board members have questions against this witness? If not, we'll ask the public if they have any questions of this witness. Mr. Sheldon.
Mr. Sheldon, 47th Flank Street. Mr. Byer, just a couple of quick questions for you. Just a little confused about the, I assume it's a parking lot in between the existing supermarket and your proposed residential, excuse me. That middle rectangle, that is, that's going to be a shared?
If I could ask you, sir, to come to the exhibit and just point to where you're discussing, I don't want to misinterpret anything you're asking. I turn around asking others because I've got one.
Some distance away, I just had a catwalk surgery yesterday. But this area here, is this going to be a shared parking lot between the existing supermarket and the residential? Or is this all dedicated to the supermarket?
It's all shared parking, so anybody can park wherever they want.
So under license standards, how many parking spots, how many parking spots are in this area to begin with? Can you, how many parking spots approximately are in this? Because I assume this is where the patrons of the supermarket...
But you made a reference to...
Well, whatever standards apply to the required amount of parking for the supermarket. I wanted to know approximately how many parking spots would be in this lot, which I assume is the parking for the patrons of the supermarket. How many parking spots does the supermarket need to accommodate its customers?
If you actually look at the table that is up on the top right there, it says non-residential use, excuse me, I'm sorry. Bottom table where it says parking requirements, it has residential and non-residentials. For total residential, we're required to have one parking space per 400 square feet. There are 75,168 square feet. For a minimum amount of parking for the non-residential, that's the grocery store and the two other new residential or non-residential areas, a minimum of 188 parking stalls are required. Now, again, there are not assigned parking spaces. However, in the area in which you are talking about, between the grocery store and building B, towards the top left, you'll see a rectangle there, and it states that that area has a total of 194 parking spaces.
And the supermarket, how many parking spaces does the supermarket require?
It would require a minimum of one space per 400 square feet. I don't have a calculator on me. So 55, 498, by-to-by, 400. 139 parking spaces minimum required for a grocery store.
The other question I had for you, I don't know if you're the one to address this or the LSRP is the person responsible, but I assume there's going to be a concrete cap below ground underneath this new structure.
Again, I think the LSRP would be better qualified.
Save that question to the LSRP. All right, I'll save that question for you. Sure. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Mary Higgins, 148 Wright Avenue. I have a question about the water.
Sure.
Okay, so there's 232 rental units, correct?
Correct.
Now, I just looked up, it said, is 120 gallons per day per bedroom the national average use of water, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So forget about the two bedrooms, we'll say one bedroom. 232 units would be, 232 times 120 times 365 days a year comes out to be a staggering 10,161,600 gallons of water added to our antiquated waters infrastructure in Belville constructed in the 1930s. I don't see how this is going to be beneficial. I know you probably don't have the answers now. It'll be delayed and delayed and delayed. Do you have an answer to that?
I will address your question.
Okay, thank you.
First off, we can't calculate water demand based on national averages. We are required by law to calculate based on, it's New Jersey Administrative Code 7 Colon 10. And that administrative code has specific requirements as far as the type of use, the number of bedrooms, et cetera, as far as what is required for water demand. Based on the calculations that's specified, now again, these are older regulations, and just hold on to me just stating this. Based on the calculations, there's an estimated average daily demand for the entire development, that's the retail and all residentials, of 35,000 gallons per day. That 35,000 gallons per day... That 35,000 gallons per day demand needs to be reviewed by the water provider, which is Newark Water. Newark Water is under the guidance and jurisdiction of the DUP. They have what's called a water allocation permit. That water allocation permit states how much water- That water allocation permit states how much water they're permitted to use or distribute and permit. So we are going to provide an application to Newark for that demand. And if they have adequate capacity and firm capacity, then ideally, they will hopefully endorse the application.
Do you have a calculator on you?
I do, yes, ma'am.
Okay, could you multiply 35,000 times 365?
I don't understand the purpose of making that.
Well, you said 35,000 gallons a day, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And how many days are there in a year?
Again, the witness has stated-
How many days are there in a year? Isn't it a reasonable question?
The witness has stated that he doesn't understand the purpose of the question.
300, you'll get, I-
There's, there's 365.
Okay, times 35,000 is what?
About 13 million.
Yes. Okay, so that would be the amount of water increased per year available.
Okay, that's the estimated average demand-
Waste water.
Hold on, you asked about water, not waste water. So domestic water demand.
No, 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 I'm talking about waste water.
Now, you're referring to waste water. Alright, waste water is regulated under NJAC 7:14, which is known as the New Jersey Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Very similar to the New Jersey Administrative Code for Water, they also specify the amount of demand that goes into a system. Based on the calculations, there is 43,000 gallons per day of discharge for the entire property. And 35,000 gallons per day is equivalent to less than a tenth of a cubic foot per second. Which is approximately about half an inch of, of discharge from the property within an eight-inch diameter.
Okay, so what is the waste water discharge per day of the entire property?
Approximately 43,000 gallons per day.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what? 15 million gallons per year? Wait, wait, wait a minute, Mr. Coffey had a question, I didn't hear it, sorry.
No, I just asked, why is the discharge higher than the usage?
That's a great question. Because... That's the way to code for it. I mean, I, I really wish I could have that answer for you, but it's the way to code for it.
So that's 16 million gallons of waste water per year added, though. Alright. I don't know if you're aware of this, but when there's a water main break, there's a antiquated system that you don't see. Somebody mentioned hydrants before, there are hydrants here. When there's a water main break, for example, that happened a couple of times on Brighton Avenue where I live. Great dyes come out and they open up the hydrants to take the pressure as they repair the water mains that are needed. And God forbid if there's a fire, alright, are you aware of that? That there's no water pressure coming out of the hydrants? You mentioned hydrants, Mr. Gassium?
I did.
Alright, where are they?
Hydrants are for the purpose of fighting fires, and the fire department will determine where they want the hydrants.
You don't see how this is all integrated? You know-
Counsel, what may be helpful-
Breaking water main pipes, hydrants with no water in them? Okay.
What, what may be helpful for next meeting is when we get the report from the fire department, and then hopefully we'll be able to pass on it to the city. I don't know if they would prepare their report till they see working drawings.
I don't necessarily know that they would have the response by then, but you know, the thing that we need to keep in consideration of is estimated average daily water demand versus anomalies of emergency situations. So, there's going to be times where, yes, there's going to be a demand on the system as a result of a fire emergency. And it's either have, be able to safely fight that fire.
I think what you could get by next meeting, though, would be location of the fire hydrants, which I think would give the community some peace of mind. And also, a statement that the internal circulation that you're proposing adequately meets the terms of the fire equipment. And I think that would give some peace to the neighbors.
And I can tell you, because I have visited the site on numerous occasions, there are existing hydrants along Belmont Avenue. And specifically, there is one in close proximity of the projected front of the store to the curb line. There is one there, right now. And I know that there are others along Belmont Avenue. But we will certainly make that request of the fire department to ask if we can have their review.
But, excuse me, my comment was, what put as a hydrant if there's no water coming out of it?
Do you have questions or just not have comments? Questions, questions.
Alright, I have another question. Could I see the picture of the nice trees? You know, the one with the trees?
Sir.
You know, it's nice that you keep comparing Belville to Montclair, there was lots of nice trees. It's going to look just like Montclair, right? Okay, I want to come up and ask you questions about this. These green things here are trees, right? Little green circles? These are trees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what's the square footage of surface area for each tree?
There will be a landscape architect-
Excuse me, can I ask you?
There will be a landscape architect to testify-
But he mentioned the pretty trees.
Who will be capable of answering that question.
I can say that although I don't know what the square footage is off the top of my head, it's something we can get. However, there is a minimum requirement of one shade tree per 10 parking stalls. We exceed that requirement.
So what is, what are the trees going to be here, old, spruce?
There's a landscape architect who's going to be watching.
So you don't know, but you're answering a question based on it?
Ma'am, I'm, I'm answering a question based on the quantity of trees, the quality, species of trees, I'm going to have to defer to the landscape architect.
Well, okay, when are we going to listen to the landscape architect?
When we call him as a witness.
Tonight?
Depends on what the board does, if they want to stay until 12 o'clock, yes. I don't think they want to do that.
Okay, so it would be inappropriate for me to ask you if there was like a soil analysis done to sustain green light here?
Ma'am, again, that's a question for me.
Okay, just asking, just asking, okay, thank you for your time.
Any other members of the public have questions against witness? Mr. Frank Tattone?
Yes, Mr. Byron, you showed the casual view of the area. Did you have a chance to study the residential area to the east of that property?
I'm aware of your residential.
Did you notice the extreme density?
That, sir, that's not part of this application.
Well, you're the engineer, and you didn't observe that most of the houses are built on 25-foot lots, right, for a street view?
It's not part of this application, nor is it required to make that determination.
Okay. You mentioned a PSCNG at 55-foot east, can you show us exactly where that 55-foot?
Certainly, and just for record, it's a 50-foot easement. It's on the northern portion of the property, which is the right side of the property. It's in between the northerly property line, and it's offset slightly from the curb line on the north side of building X.
Is that the road that the public service use?
That's how they access their facility now, yes.
And you also mentioned that PSCNG electric line. Can you show us exactly where that is?
They're not shown on this drawing, they are part of the application package that was submitted to the township. But they are within that eastern area, below ground.
They're within that 50-foot east?
Yes, sir.
Not where this development is proposed?
That's correct.
You mentioned the groundwater recharge area. And you asked that the town to waive that requirement?
That's correct.
The town agrees with it?
There was a recommendation that it be agreed to.
A recommendation made by what, your-
By the town's reviewing engineer to the board.
To what board?
To the planning board.
To the planning board? And the planning board approved it?
No. That's why we're here tonight, we're seeking that approval.
Okay, so, I hope they don't weigh it. The stormwater detention system, where is that, it's known as a detention basin?
Yes.
Where is that located?
Below ground.
Where, on the ground?
So, referring to, this is again, exhibit 8.3, it is within the parking area between the existing grocery store and exposed building B.
And what's it designed for, what year's storm?
We're required to design it to 100-year storm event, and that's what it is.
You're designing to that standard?
Yes, sir.
The, um... Let's get to the parking. Well, let's go back to, and again, one of the board members' question too, why do they discharge the water rate that's higher than the water usage today? You said the water demand is 35,000 gallons per day, and 43,000 gallons will be discharged-
That's correct.
Can you find out a little further how that, the math on it? How can you discharge more than you-
That's the rate that we are required to specify based on state regulations.
It's like, only use a gallon of water, how can I discharge two gallons?
What if I throw down, what if I drop a bottle of soda in the drain?
8,000 gallons of soda a day? We're looking for a day, Mr. Lawrence.
Everybody throws something in there, I think that's not water.
Well, all the witnesses-
Wait, wait, just give me a second.
All the witnesses talking about are what the state requirements are, we can't control the state requirements, that's what they require.
But what I will tell you is, where I live and where I work are two different municipalities. I consume water at work. And something else happened to the whole.
That was the difference.
It's, it's, it's just human consumption.
Well, the problem here is, I agree with you. However, we're talking about, look at the math, 8,000 gallons a day difference. We're not talking about 100,000 or 1,000, 8,000 gallons a day. Now, that's a lot of business to the pensioner lady, you know? But, there's a severe problem with that, and I hope the planning board pays attention to it. Because a lot of this water, we get, that area gets water from North. Multisubol Lake, I believe, that one too. But then it comes into the Belville sewer system.
Yes.
Alright, as an engineer-
Comes into the Belville water supply system, not the sewer system.
No, I'm talking about the sewer system. I'm talking about the sanitary sewer system.
Yes.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
It's owned and maintained by Belville Township.
Right. Are you familiar with that system?
Enough that there is a system there.
Right. Are you familiar with combined sewers?
Yes, I am.
Do you know what that is? Can you explain to the public?
A combined sewer-
Objection, Mr. Walsh. What is the purpose of the line of question?
I'll tell you the purpose of the line of question, Mr. Gassium. Because that area, a lot of that area goes into a combined sewer, which nationwide they're trying to eliminate. You add 43,000 gallons a day, we got major problems, and the outlet of that sewer is right by a place that you frequent quite often. How would you like to be having your daughter's wedding at Donina's and right across the parking lot, all that water?
No. We don't have combined sewers, Mr. Frank Tattone.
There's no combined sewer in County Series.
In all due respects to Mr. Harris, me, Commissioner Rosales, and Chester Green walked in that combined sewer six times. That's called the Meadow, the Meadow Brook store, that's a combined sewer.
The sewer that, that, that services that goes nowhere near the Meadow Brook?
Where does it go to?
It goes down to Franklin, walks its way around the Franklin Street and goes out. The Meadow Brooks is stored sources.
It's a combined sewer. It was built in the 30s by Blomfield East and Jordan Hill. We most certainly do. Right back to Stephen Crane Village.
The town engineer answered your question.
He's making statements, Mr. Frank Tattone, we have to listen and actually what he says.
Well, I hope you look into it, because it's right back in Stephen Crane Village, and it discharges into right across, if you stand nine-inch walkway, look across the river. And at times, my wife and her girlfriend is to walk there, sometimes you get big storms, you go in and look at the apples that's coming out of it. Apple. I mean, green and ugly stuff coming out of that Meadow Brook storm system, and quite a jake.
This is for questions, Mr. Walsh.
Somebody's got to look at that very carefully, and I asked you members of the planning board to look, because that adds 43,000 gallons to our sewer system. And by the way, if it does, if it does go into that, well, I'll leave that to my summations. Let's get to the parking. Now, um, if you're confused on some, someone asked about the parking for the grocery store. At one point you mentioned 188 parking spaces, was that correct?
I don't recall. There's 194 parking spaces allocated in the surface parking area between the grocery store and retail, or, excuse me, building A. Or B, the L-shaped.
Now, somebody said, you told about shared parking spaces.
Correct.
And what does that mean? The apartment and the grocery store?
Yes.
Shared the apartment? Shared apartment?
Yes.
And how does that work, Mr. Walsh?
This is, it's a, whatever's available, you park there. Again, from a management perspective, it will be something within releases restricting the total number of spaces.
So, we're sure, because the statement was made that we're providing more parking spaces than are required.
That's correct.
Well, I don't see that we're using the RISI standard, 232 units at 1.8 parking, there's 470.
Objection, the standard has been set by the redevelopment plan, and the testimony is that we have 125 more spaces than are required by the redevelopment plan.
Well, the math doesn't add up, but I, shared parking spaces, I guess we'll have to wind up the testimony about shared parking spaces. Are you, are you the engineer who tells about the type of construction?
No.
The architect is not, right?
Well, is there a specific question that you would like addressed related to site owners?
Yes, I, I want to nail it down to the type of joy that we're going to use these open, lightweight-
Sir, that's, that's a building aspect that's not part of my testimony.
Okay. Well, I asked you to find out who is the expert, that's all that matters. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one thing, would I be correct to say that the total usage of water isn't just on the new development? Because we already have a 55,000-square-foot facility that is using the discharge and water there too. So some of our calculations are a little off by the fact that there already is usage and discharge from the sewer.
That's correct. The numbers I quoted are based on that, and the other thing that we have to keep in mind is, these are older regulations that have been in place for quite a long time. They do not take into consideration now more efficiency, toilets and faucets, et cetera.
David, give me your- So, you said that there was a groundwater recharge regulation? And you were hoping the town, you said the planning board was going to waive that?
We're requesting a waiver from the-
From the planning board?
Yes.
And you said one of the reasons was an underlying situation. What is that?
There's, there's groundwater contamination, which will be addressed by a licensed site remediation professional, the LSRP. And one of the things that you do not want to do is exasperate, you want to be cautious. If there is something that is there, you don't want to make it any worse. So that's the purpose of requesting that, that waiver.
That's a concern. And also, you said that there's going to be these two retention areas, and that-
Detention, no, it's detention.
I thought you retained.
You retain water, but it's a detention basis.
And you said the water would be treated?
That's correct.
Before release?
Treated how? There is, and you'll, you can see on the drawing, and again, I'm referring to exhibit 8.3, there are some areas that show- There are some areas that show manhole covers. There's an underlying manufactured stormwater treatment device, which is reviewed and approved by the DEP. And the intention of that device is stormwater flows through it, goes through a filter system, it removes suspended solids, nutrients before discharging out.
And on that subject, this gentleman was mentioning the combined sewer.
So, but for record, where we are discharging into, in Belmont Avenue, they are separate sewers.
So, it's a separate storm sewer?
Yes.
And so then, for the new residences, it's all going to be, it's going to be this sewer line that's poked up there.
There's one sewer line coming into the property for each of those. The 260-something units do not all have individual laterals.
So, I had a concern about, again, the recyclables.
Sure.
I mean, there's going to be, there's a lot of...
Now, again, sir, I'm only, I, I can't testify...
Were you involved in that?
Well, I can't testify to the interior of, you know, design and architectural features, but I can't testify.
And where are the hauling areas for the recyclables and the trash?
Well, I can tell you that, based on, on this exhibit, there are two areas that are identified in each building. And for purposes of the public, I'm putting them out. This rectangular area on the north side of the property, or the right side of the sheet of Building A, is the trash collection area.
For that entire building?
That's for the building. But again, there's a compactor in there, and there is a private hauling service that's done by management for the frequency of pickups.
So, you're accounting for the number of...
I'll, let me just finish pointing out where. And in Building B, on the southerly side, just approximately a third of the way west within the...
Square?
Yes, where it says trash.
So, the hauler is going to go around where? And it's going to go all the way around and then come down to that square area? And also, the hauler's going to come to this square area in the front, facing the grocery store? And that's also where the, the trucks are going to come? From the, the delivery to the store?
Yes.
And do we know how, can you figure out how many garbage trucks, how many delivery trucks are going to be running through there?
I, I'm not aware of the management of the grocery store frequency of the hauls.
And that's an egress right there, the trucks will come right out.
Sir, you keep saying there. Can you come to the exhibit and just indicate where you're pointing to?
It's a good point. I think it shows a better on this... So...
All right, and just for record, the audience member is referring to Exhibit A1, which is the perspective rendering prepared by the architect.
So, it's off the chart here. But there's, there's an egress right here. That's where the, most of the trucks will come?
Yes, that's...
And we don't know how many trucks?
No.
And is this along the sidewalk it's going to go? Are there entrances to the apartments or entrances to stores? The stores are only on this side?
If you could go back to the site rendering, which is Exhibit A3. Referring to Exhibit A3, and I'm looking, I'm pointing first at Building B. Near the north corner of the retail area is the lobby. That is the entrance to the residential. And then on, excuse me, on Building A, I'm also pointing on the north side where the lobby is.
So, there's, and there's parking underneath, right here, I can see them. It's not, it's not visible from out there, but you can look here. So, there's, there's an entrance here, and then all, all this is parking under here?
Yes. And just for record, the, the audience member is pointing to parking beneath Building B.
And there's parking in here, underneath that building as well?
Yes, below Building A.
And so, when the trucks come around here and pick up, then they'll come out here?
Sorry, I, I can't testify as to how the garage goes.
That's an egress, right?
That's correct.
And I don't think this is your area. We were wondering how much the rentals are.
He certainly had a row.
And again, how, how many are two-bedroom, one-bedroom?
Again, that was specified to by the architect, not the engineers, not what he testified.
And one, one other concern is, you were saying that there's, we're trying to reduce the non-permeable area.
Correct.
In other words, so, the existing area... Is there a point we're trying to make here, or?
I'm sorry?
Is there a point we're, we're trying to ask or shift it? Uh, yeah, there's, there's an issue about permeability. Okay. Not permeability. So, here's the current site. All of this right here is parking right now.
And, and again, for the benefit of the record, the audience member is referring to Exhibit A4. That's it, sir.
And... Does the owner of this property right now owns the store as well?
I believe so, yes.
And does the owner of this property also own?
No.
This area over here?
No. And for record purposes, the audience member is identifying on the exhibit the surface auto parking area to the south of the property. That's all I'm saying.
And the original Edison plan covered this entire region?
I can't testify as to that.
It did. So, you know, my point is that... All that parking area, there's pollution on it.
Objection, Mr. Chair. It's just testimony.
So, with all that parking, that parking, the current parking extends to about here, I would say. Does it extend to about right?
And again, for the benefit of the audience...
Under, under residential Building B.
For benefit of the record, audience member is referring back to Exhibit A3.
And actually, so then with these, this residential building, this residential building, this pavement here, which is all right now for S U. You're actually increasing the non-permeable areas.
That's correct. There is an increase in impervious coverage.
And that creates issues.
Georgine Polite.
I'm, I'm sorry, again?
Georgine Polite.
Spell in the last name, please.
P-O-L-I-T-E.
Thank you.
In regards to the vegetative covering, can you explain to the audience what that does? And the impact that that has on the impermeability?
Would I, I'm not...
I think what, I think what the neighbor is asking is that you can go over, what is the situation today of runoff? What are you doing tomorrow? Are you decreasing runoff or are you improving? I think that's the concern.
Is that...
All right, well, the vegetative covering, it also...
And does the vegetation have any influence on your, on your calculation?
I'm referring to an engineering report prepared by Dresner Robin, which is dated February 15, 2018, and was submitted as part of the site plan application. It was also reviewed by the township engineer. In the existing conditions, we are required by law under New Jersey Administrative Code to evaluate for three types of storm events, its probabilities. It's based on a two-year storm event, a 10-year storm event, and a 100-year storm event. For the existing conditions, for the two-year storm, we are, the site discharges, and again, this is with the existing grassy area that's on there, undeveloped. We're discharging 16 cubic feet per second. For the proposed condition, with the additional impervious cover, we are discharging 11 cubic feet per second. And the reduction is because of the result of that stormwater detention basin. For the 10-year storm, we're discharging in the existing conditions 26 cubic feet per second. Proposed conditions, we're discharging 20 cubic feet per second. In a 100-year storm event, the site discharges 47 cubic feet per second. In a 100-year storm event, it discharges 41 cubic feet per second. So, it is meeting the state requirements for peak flow reductions.
Now, is there any possibility that, that could be expanded in terms of the vegetative covering that you have in the carports that were to the north end?
The, the carports are covered with a roof that has vegetation on it. And, and thank you for bringing that up. We actually...
Is there a possibility that...
Let me just address that. We actually treat those areas underneath as where the surface runoff is. We're actually not reducing for the amount of stormwater that's captured in those roof areas. So, it is...
So, it actually has, has a more positive impact than you're actually talking. Thanks.
I had a couple more questions. Will there be fencing around the property, particularly between the property and the railroad?
There's existing fencing.
So, you're not going to improve the fence?
Yeah.
And, so we know the parking is being provided for the tenants, and we know how much parking is being provided for the grocery store. But what about for the 232 apartments? What happens when they have visitors? Where do they put visitors to park? What if somebody in the two-bedroom apartment has about six visitors come to dinner for Thanksgiving? Where do they park?
That's going to be a management discussion.
And what if they stay over? Where do they park?
I, I...
See, that's a what-if question, and...
The, the client is supporting 125 more spaces than required. There isn't a parking issue based on the requirements.
Any other questions?
Come on, Flashman, one, two, right and tree. You said if, is it going to be gated, the property?
No, not the property itself. The courtyard area is going to be gated with some type of access that's permitted to the residents.
Oh, all right, so it'd be around, like, you know, it's not going to be a quote-unquote gated community that in case of emergency, the fire department could not get a correct option?
Mr. Del Gershio?
Jerry Del Gershio, A. Grove Street, Belville.
Number one, how many two-bedrooms are you saying there's going to be?
Mr. Del Gershio, that was specified to by the architect.
Why? No, why? I just want to know.
Because now we're coming on the parking, and I want to tie it into the parking, that's one.
So, how many two-bedrooms was there supposed to be?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four two-bedrooms. Okay. And how many one-bedrooms?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and one?
Eight.
One, oh, eight. And I believe there was a forty and a forty, or twenty and a twenty. Twenty and twenty, all right, twenty and twenty. Okay. So, that comes to 232 units.
That's correct.
Correct? Now, this is retail. You have to look what I'm building out, because you're on that side, I'm...
I understand, sir.
This is retail, but above there's apartments.
And just for record purposes, the audience member is referring to Exhibit A3 and pointing to the retail portion of Building B.
Okay, now, this is retail, but there's supposed to be apartments above it. Four stories, correct? Now, is there going to be any retail here?
No.
No retail, so there's going to be no retail store space in this parking lot, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's going to be parking spaces here, I assume, for the retail? Well, I, that's what's on your picture.
There's, there's parking that's provided for the entire site.
Okay, over here. All right, now let me ask you a question. Under Building A, this whole land is supposed to have parking underneath, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and Building B is supposed to be parking underneath here too, correct?
Just for record purposes, there is no requirement of where the parking needs to be. The applicant is providing parking.
But that's part of the plan.
Right, but you're saying it's...
That's what's proposed.
That's correct.
Here, underneath, and all this length underneath.
That's correct.
What's the total parking spaces of underneath here and underneath here?
Underneath Building A, there are 65 parking spaces plus three accessible spaces for a total of 68.
68, okay.
Underneath Building B, there's 23 parking stalls plus two accessible for a total of 25.
All right, so, there's 68 and 25.
Correct.
So, you're talking about there's less than 100 parking spaces underneath for the residents. But you have a total of 232 bedrooms or units.
Correct.
So, you, you don't have anywhere near what's needed.
Certainly we do. It's shared parking. They're not required to park underneath the building. They're permitted to also park anywhere where there's parking shown on the site plan.
Well, then how do you get this restriction you were talking about that they were going to put in?
It was with respect to a restriction of the quantity or the number of cars each unit is permitted to have.
How are you going to control that?
It's, that's up to management. That's an ownership decision based on the lease.
Based on the lease?
When, when prospective tenants...
Most apartments have, a lot of apartments in town have that.
Right. Tenant signs a lease, you're restricted to a certain number of parking spaces.
Yes, that, that's true, but it's usually based upon how many units you have. Okay, if you have, if you have, technically, if this was not an area needing redevelopment, you'd go by your own zoning laws. Your own zoning laws require two parking spaces per unit. Yes, it does. Don't tell me what it is. Okay, it's two parking spaces per unit. You don't come nowhere near even one parking space per bedroom. Now, you have this shared thing, but you're saying this area requires 100 and how much? Just for, just for, just for the, the current building that's there? How much is required there? You said before?
Based on the regulations of the redevelopment plan, there's 139 spaces that are required for grocery store.
By 400, you went by the 400 square feet or whatever it was?
Correct, one space for 400.
So, one space, that's the town ordinance or is that the redevelopment plan?
It's redevelopment plan.
What's the town ordinance?
But, Mr. Del Gershio, that's not relevant to this application. I object. We have to comply with the redevelopment plan.
The redevelopment plan was set up to satisfy you. It wasn't set, it wasn't set up for the ordinance of the town.
Sir, the redevelopment plan is adopted by ordinance. So, there is ordinance.
It's an ordinance that was designed to accommodate this development. That's the way it always is. You can't argue with me, because you know I'm right.
I can't speculate.
Well, that's nothing to speculate. You come in, you ask for an area needing redevelopment. They come in, they want a redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan is usually geared toward what is looking to be built there. Otherwise, there wouldn't be even a request, to request whether it was going to be an area needing redevelopment or not.
But what relevant, you're going into a theory...
But what I'm saying to you is, you're saying because of the redevelopment plan, that you're satisfied with the amount of parking spaces.
I'm saying we...
But it doesn't comply with the zoning of the town.
It lies with the zoning of the town for that location. It absolutely...
It's geared, in other ways, it's like, it's like a... I don't think it matters what it's geared to, like you said, that's the ordinance.
Comply with.
And you have to comply with what you designed. That's what you comply with.
Well, can I interject the second? Part of the, when we passed the redevelopments, part of the thinking was that this was a development so close to mass transit that people were going to be attracted to it, that they didn't need a vehicle. Now, we could restrict the list.
They don't need a vehicle to go to work, maybe. But they need a vehicle to go wherever they want. If they want to go shopping, or here, or there.
I agree. We should restrict the development and keep that empty parking lot there for another 35 years.
No, 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 you didn't hear what I, no, you're putting words in my mouth.
No, we are trying to accommodate.
I did not say that.
We are trying to accommodate a development, and if we believe that it's unreasonable, then we would vote against it. So far, I don't think it's that unreasonable. Some of the parking requirements are unreasonable. How is, how is this development, a developer is going to come... A developer is going to come in there and put, what, 100 units, 50 units?
I didn't say that.
Well, how many units can he put with the parking requirement that you're suggesting he use?
You're not even satisfying this for one parking space.
There's almost 500 parking spaces at this location, 500. Total. That's a, 487.
I think the shared parking works excellent in this location.
I'm not arguing about, I'm not arguing about the shared parking.
People go to the supermarket when everybody's working.
So what is the total, what is the total amount of parking, shared enough?
487 spaces.
All right, so you're talking about 487 spaces. So then it meets the requirement of what's needed. Then why didn't you just say that?
Well, I think if you listen, we did say that before.
No, you keep on going with the 100 of this and 100 of that, and nobody comes with a total, 400 spaces. I haven't heard 400 spaces all night.
They said 487. And like I said, I think it really works well. With a supermarket, while people are at work, people are shopping. Oh, yeah, I agree. If they're home from work, the shoppers are home.
Well, I take a little, I take a little offense to acting as if this board approves something to accommodate Mr. Del Gersio.
Well, let me...
The board, listen, they proposed something to us at a site that's been an eyesore to the town for 50 years. And I think this would be a great improvement.
I didn't say it's a benefit. I didn't say it's a benefit. You're putting words in my mouth again. All I'm saying to you is this. Whenever you make a redevelopment plan, it's designed toward the developer.
Absolutely.
And it's totally different from the regular zoning laws.
Absolutely, we create the ordinance. That's a fact. And I don't believe that this board made a development plan that's unreasonable. There's 500, nearly 500 parking spaces there. This town should hope that that lot gets filled up with people. It would be a boon to that community.
Well, there's one thing I'm going to tell you that I agree about, and I'm going to tell you why. That parking lot, the way it is now, for that shopping center that's there now, never gets half full.
It's a big waste of space.
So it's a big waste of space. I'm not going to argue that point, and I'll make that as a statement tonight in favor of this.
Queen of Order? Queen of Order? Mary Higgins on 48th and Wright Avenue? Do you mean to tell that you've already decided in favor of this without hearing all the testimony and hearing everything? That you are in favor of this?
But so far, so far, based on water consumption and parking, I haven't been dissuaded from it. I haven't been.
I can't believe this. This is so unfair. This is so unfair. You're already saying that you're approving this without hearing all the published testimonies, without hearing our questions, and without hearing the expert witnesses? All right, I wanted to go on record. Thank you.
The redevelopment plan was approved, not this application. There's a substantial difference.
You know what?
Mr. Sheldon? Michael Sheldon, 47, for issue. I'm just having just a little bit of problem with the math for the parking spots. Mr. Byer just told Mr. Del Gersio, underneath buildings A and B, there are 93 spots. Earlier, you told me that there are 194 spots.
You're correct, sir. I missed both because I did not add the 88 spaces.
All right, but let me just tell that I, underneath the two buildings, there are 93 spots, 68 in building A, 25 in building B. In the shared spot between all the structures, there are 194. So that comes up to 287, and yet you're saying there are 487 spots. So where are the other 200?
There is also parking on the, all around the property. I mean, the area that I answered the question of regarding 194 spaces was specific to the area between the grocery store and building B. The balance of the site has additional parking. There are 11 parking stalls on the westerly side of the grocery store, 40 parking stalls on the easterly side of the grocery store. There are 57 spaces between building B and Belmont Avenue. There are 21 spaces between building A and Belmont Avenue. There are 65 spaces between building A and the northerly property line, which is the light rail line. So that adds up to the total amount of parking on the property.
Any more questions from the public?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. You spoke, the shared parking is a big issue. Just that we're talking use, practical use, Saturdays. People are home, work is out. If they have cars to possess.
Mr. Mattingly, is there a question?
There is. Will you allow me to get to him?
It's time for questions, not for you to testify.
No, I'm asking if, when, people are home, and they're at home with their vehicles, and they live in the property, you know, in the various residential units, and then people come to shop, which is a very common occurrence on Saturdays, to do their food shopping and various other types of shopping. How do you use the same space twice? If people are in the, in the, well, let's say it's on, you know, a day when it's maybe not a great day to go sightseeing, seeing rain. They're home, they're not going anywhere. But people are coming to shops. How do they share the same space?
The term shared parking means it is a combination of uses of the grocery store and the residential. So any of those uses can use any of those spaces, okay?
Right.
So it's not a matter of sharing at the same time. The total number of parking spaces that are provided far exceed the minimum requirements that are specified by the township within redevelopment.
I appreciate that, but you just pointed to a tremendous amount of exterior parking around the fence line that borders the tracks, back behind the building, which, you know, obviously, and down the front. The convenient parking is right in the area in between the residential and the commercial application. I contend that that'll be heavily used.
I agree with that. Well, from my experience, I've been living there 55 years. I went by at, at 1 o'clock today, I found 41 cars at the spot. A lot of cars park between Belmont and the side of the building. It's easier to get to the entrance than parking over in the middle. So I mean, that's assumptions you're making that I don't agree with.
Well, but we're talking about future development of 232 units.
Have you ever driven by there during the day and seen how few cars were parked?
Well, I'm well aware, and if you go back further, it's even more desolate because of the pollution that exists on the property. So, you know, there is not going to be tremendous people running to, you know, utilize that property until it's remediated and potentially throw it online. So, and that was something I want to go back to earlier when you began your testimony. You basically said that the property was decommissioned and deconstructed in the late 1960s. Do we have any proof of the process that was gone through when basically the Edison property was no longer...
I think the DEP is involved with this. And any building that has to be done has to be done to current DEP standards. So anything that has to be built on is going to be built to current DEP standards. We can't build residential on a property without having a DEP approval. And I'm sure...
That's correct. And just for the record, Mr. Mattingly, we have a licensed site remediation professional on the team who is also going to be providing testimony. So I'll address the environment last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go follow up on parking. So if building B ends up having a health closure, it is open from pretty early in the morning, maybe even 12 o'clock at night, who knows? The number of parking spaces needed for these health closures, the one...
Questions, questions, limited to questions.
Have you considered that kind of a problem? And also, people have been saying, they said the grocery store hopefully will be much greater use in the future because you're making such a beautiful investment there. So again, the grocery store will be open probably till 10 o'clock at night, correct?
I can't speculate as to the time of the grocery store.
And so there'll be people parking out there, there'll be residents parking there, Saturdays, Sundays. This is an issue, and I've never heard the answer yet as to where visitors will park. I'm kind of unsure that's going to be up to management. So, you know, I don't think that's thoroughly thought out. Hopefully, some future witnesses will be able to talk about that. Is there any more questions from the public?
But if not... Would counsel?
Yeah, obviously, I'm ready with another witness if you want.
We're going to carry to about 10 to 10 on synographer.
I understand.
You have three or four witnesses?
I have three more witnesses. I have the landscape architect, the traffic expert, and the LSRP.
Are you planning on going on the regular agenda then, in April?
Uh, yeah, if, I think if we're going to continue the regular agenda we're talking two weeks from now, that would be acceptable.
And will you waive any applicable...
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have some comments left.
We're going to carry the meeting forward to our next regularly scheduled meeting with no further notification.
That meeting date will be April 12 at 7?
April 12, 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM here.
Thank you.
Does someone like to make a motion?
Motion, adjourn.
Thank you.
April 7.